Okay. Hello, everybody.
Okay.
We need order at six o'clock on May 3rd, 2021, at the Villish Town Hall. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Seven.
I'm seconded.
One favor, any discussion, further discussion? If not, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, back minutes. We have the minutes of 14, and minutes of the 19th. And still the question is first. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of April 14th? I think that there are none. If that is the case, if somebody makes a motion to accept the minutes of April 14th, will you turn them on?
No.
Further discussion? If not, one favor, I'll adopt the minutes of 14th. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's hear that one. Now, we got, the next minute is the 19th. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of April 19th?
Mr. Chair, I noticed a couple typos.
Okay.
In number three, a motion by Sue Allen, Second Captain Ciano, to approve the minutes at the meeting of the April 5th meeting as presented. Motion passed, you now in sleep. Minutes of this session in April 14th, 2021.
I don't know what, I don't know where you are, what your-
It's the second line on three.
Second line on three, okay.
The minutes of April-
Okay, good, okay. Yeah, I got it. Okay, now, after that?
Then, at the end of the sentence, it's another April.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any others? If not, one favor, approving the minutes of April 19th. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. All highway reports. Danny, do you want to sort out?
Sure. Um, so they gravel and stone the response to the RFQs. I have not seen all those that were sent out yet. Um, I don't know, I've only seen the three, uh, three that came back.
That's all we, excuse me. That's all we have so far.
All right, so we're still missing a couple, so I don't know if you guys want to just wait till them come in for the next meeting to go over them, or?
Uh, Danny, the only thing I have on it is, I thought that, uh, we were gonna list the materials that we use the most, and then send those to the suppliers to get prices. Because a lot of the things around here, we never even use. And to put these all together on a spreadsheet to, uh, find out the cost of different places gonna be on the bar.
I don't know.
I thought, you know, we only-
The materials listed that we use.
Well, the only, what we use, six or seven different items?
At the most, yes.
So, that's what I thought, those would be sent out to the suppliers, and we get prices on those, because we don't need these other prices.
Well, I mean, these are just their price schemes. But, I mean, if you wanted to do an actual bid, I thought after we talked with that Ciano's stuff, we just did our fees. So, they're just gonna give you a price on all the materials.
But, but, one of them says that it's a town that has better pricing.
I think that's on Josh Perry's.
Yeah.
Um, and it says, on la- on large quantity.
For state and municipalities.
For large quantity.
Yeah.
So, do you want to take and just put these out as a bid then?
No, I just want to get the prices on what we use.
That's what these are. Just Osmo hasn't returned one yet, and Eastman, Sand and Gravel have not returned theirs yet.
Who, uh, okay, Sir Osmo, okay. Thank you.
And Coal River material, one was sent to them. The other ones called you, Bill, and said that they're so far away, they wouldn't deliver anyways.
Danny, I'm asking this wrong, but are these in a format where you can look, put them side by side, pull out exactly what we need from each, so that we can compare prices? I have trouble, some of the first crushed gravel, and others have ledge and stone, and I, it was hard for me to compare apples to apples, but I wondered if, you know, with your experience, if you can take these and do that.
I could. Some of them, what is so confusing is like on St. Pierre's pricing, we got something beside them that were handwritten in. You have to time that per the yard to come up the amount for the yard's price. Because they sell by the ton. But I can, we could, I could, we could, uh, next, I know, with Bill and I make up a small spreadsheet and just do it, so that it's all done by the yard. List just a few items, whatever.
I just find it very hard to, to separate these, you know, like, uh, Katie Tucker doesn't have a shirt back.
He doesn't have it.
I know, but that's one of your major, uh, items, and as I say, if you had shirt back, inch and a half gravel, three inch stone, five inch stone, whatever, if those four or five are listed, then we could get, I think we could determine the prices a lot better. Unless you could break them out, maybe you could break these out.
I think, I think we can.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, but they're not gonna send a price back on stuff they don't have, so that's why he might have had like inch or back or something like that, so we just ask for a price request on all the items. But we're, we're break them up in, in the next meeting, and then you go from there. Um, then you, Bill's got the weight permit from Jamie Gregory.
Yeah, and I have one more from Unified Natural Foods, Inc., uh, UNFI. They are also put, put in theirs.
Yeah.
That's, that's UNFI, is that what that is?
UNFI, the, yeah, the food deliverer, yeah.
We need a motion for this, I'll do it.
Yeah, yep, and, and for me to sign it, yeah.
Well, that's all, that's all that, now, I think.
Yeah, okay.
So, I want to make a motion that we, um, that Bill sent out the, and, um, he signed the letters from Gregory and the UNFI.
So, hold.
Second. Further discussion? If not, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Danny, you have anything else?
Uh, under other stuff, I just say work schedule. We, uh, got a few of the cohorts done on the Cambridge Fort Road. Yeah, we got rained out. We have two left on that road to do, and a bunch of ditching. Try to do some grading in between the rainstorms. We had, uh, put new potholes still to get patched. Then we'll move on to some of the other roads for cohorts.
Danny, Danny, there's a sign down on 35, a school bus sign being, it's, uh, must have broken off or something. It's, uh, I think it's a little before Eastman.
Okay.
Oh, the school bus turnaround sign?
Yeah. Yeah. That I noticed.
I'll check that.
It looks, it looked like it got snapped off, and maybe the wind did, or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we also got a new sign, I think it just come in for Eastman Road. Someone stole that one a while back, and we've been waiting for new one. So, we're, we're-
There's a package downstairs, it looks like a sign, so.
Yeah.
And I think there's license plate, can Bill send it?
Say it.
There's license plates, Danny?
Well, I, yeah, he has them, I talked to him about it. Can I ask him one other thing?
Yeah.
On Cambridge Fort, is that the better roads work you're doing? The ditching? That's not, okay, okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Do you have anything else, Danny? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Ken here?
I am.
Ken, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so, do you want to deal with the dog licenses and?
Yep, I'm just gonna, I'll just give you an update on the dog licenses. Um, as of June 1st, Kathy says I need to give my report to you as any dogs that are unlicensed. Um, I could tell you, as of right now, we're down to only 20 dogs from last year that haven't been licensed yet. What I'll do is when, in the next, probably this week, make phone calls to those 20 people. And then after I've called them, your next meeting, I'll try to turn over this list to you. And then you can then instruct our constable what to do. Um, as of right now, there's no late fees that are being tacked onto the dog license. Statue says that we need to wait 90 days from the date of the state of emergency ends before we can then apply any late fees. So, we're holding off on the late fees for now. They're still due to be registered. And that's probably all I have to update you on. Unless you have any questions or me.
So, Kim, uh, this is Suzanne. I didn't quite understand what you said. I think you said there are 20 dogs that have not been licensed. Is that correct, number 20?
Right, 20 from last year.
Okay, and so, um, you're going to call those 20 dog owners? And if they actually get their license between now and the next select board meeting, that's fine. And the remaining ones, you'll bring to our next select board meeting for direction to the constable?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then the constable, he has to do. Um, and, um, whether we have tick, we really can't tick it, or have late fees yet, until 90 days after the state of emergency ends.
Uh, Kim, you gonna be, uh, on for other business?
Yeah, I'm gonna stick around.
Okay.
It's just so much fun.
Do you want, do you want to do that now?
Yeah, it's real short.
Well, why not?
Uh, Kim, on the warrants, I see the White Church requests for money.
Yep, I took that off already, because what had happened is I jumped the gun when I was trying to, um, tie everything up for the fiscal year, hoping to get all humanitarian requests, and it cleared up. And I totally forgot that they were next year. You know, we told it, Michelle's gonna void the chapter.
I signed it.
Michelle, stop that.
Anything else on Kim? No, thank you, Kim. Okay, um, Hardy?
Yeah?
The listeners, do you want to share an update?
Okay. I guess I was supposed to go here.
Yeah, only, only for the simple reasons of the, so the-
And then turn, and, and Hardy, turn, turn the mic on, too. Right there.
Okay. Okay, I really just wanted to give about the select board, uh, an update on the reappraisal. Uh, the current status is as follows. Late this week, new property values will be sent to all property owners. Included with the new values will be instructions on how to schedule an informal hearing with New England Municipal Consultants if they do not agree with the new value. All informal hearings will take place from May 20th through May 22nd. And they will be here at the Town Hall. We, uh, were originally going to do it at the meeting house, but after talking with Kim today, uh, we're probably gonna need to use a computer for different, uh, people, printing, et cetera, so we're going to do it right here, if there's somebody who needs to communicate back, as the room downstairs in our office. And, uh, Kim is all included with, and agreed with. The following week, any changes that result from the informal hearing will be processed, and final values are planned to be sent out by the listeners prior to June 1st. Once received by the property owner, they will have the ability to follow the normal agreements procedure if they disagree with the new assessed value for the property. So, that is basically the time. Have any questions?
No, I don't know.
When did, when did they send out, uh, the second time, the corrected?
We will send it out prior to June 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Hardy, would you finally just go over one more time? The, what happens between the informal hearing and when the final value is determined?
Okay. What will happen is, they will meet with the people here. They will listen to the people, and they are swayed in what is already, uh, on the, uh, printout that they have developed for that property. They will change it in the system. That will then get all rolled over into our system and never, which prints out the grand list, the abstract. And that will occur. That drop June 1st, it could be the day before, the day after, or the next day. But that's the point.
Okay, I have a question, Danny, Hardy. When you send out the, the notice of the newly appraisal, is it gonna be like, is it just gonna be, say, oh, here it is, or it's gonna list the three bathrooms, 25 acres, or something?
That will be the informal hearing. You'll get that, uh, of the informal hearing. And when we send out our print, then you can, if you don't disagree, you can come to us, or we can print out your, any card you want, we can do anything we want, basically, um, move the data and get it to you.
Will you be at the informal hearing, or will that not be attended by our own listings?
We will be there as well. That is the point. If not, all three of us, because there will be the planets that have two or three people and going with two or three at the same time possibly.
So, the appointments are May 20th through 27th?
Yes. That's a Thursday Friday, and it's average.
It's a short window for you.
Is that?
That's a short window. We have a lot of people complaining.
I don't really think it's going to be, to be broken.
What, you, you think they did a good job, is that, that's the point?
Yes, I think.
That's all.
I also suggest that, uh, please send out an email to the district board and everybody on the VCA, that there is a VCA, uh, course that's gonna be held on May 20th from 10:30 to 12:00. I would suggest that everybody take that course, because I'm sure there'll be at least one VCDP hearing which people will be involved in, that does the slide board and, uh, all of the justice of the peace, or?
Yeah, I saw that, and, uh, I guess we have to, is Kim gonna register, or Bill's gonna register?
I would say, yes, I mean, there's a link. I think Kim sent everybody the link. So, all you gotta do is click on the link, and you'll be registered, and, uh, you'll go from there, just. Very simple, probably, if you need many courses, that's what it is, you know.
The link is there and there, I don't believe there's any charge for this either.
No, there's no charges for any of the, uh, courses coming out of the property evaluation, and we're using the product for the sale. Anything else? Okay? I'm here for more questions, if anything.
All right, thank you, buddy. Um, the next is the Town Hall. Um, held in for, you know, you wanted to press that one, or?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm not getting ahead of anything, what I, but when I, when I was reading through the thing on the, uh, VCDP application, it said, before you file an application, file the pre-application, and then we will get ahold of you and help you with an application. Um, all I would like to do is that it's okay to follow that procedure. I will not follow an app, you're not gonna approve me filing an application until we have an application for you to look at. But, um, it, it is, according to, uh, VCDP, uh, the, the people that handle it at Vermont Community Development Program, a very complicated and very, uh, demanding a process to go through. And, uh, so, that's why they asked me to do it earlier. What I sent him is an application that gave everything that I know that we have. As, as you may or may not know, Jeff Martell, who is a, um, resident of, a resident of Long Island, but he lives, he's up here quite often, next to Montecavos on the, on the Chester Road. He, uh, helped me, uh, he looked at the building, he sketched out a design, um, decided where it would, would go. And actually, he put it outside the post office over here, but that won't work. So, it, it'll be, it'd be just preliminary, it'll be in the back of the room, right here, behind me, in the middle, and in our, and in our entry downstairs. It would cost about, uh, be- between the building, the structure that it's housed in, and, uh, buying the elevator in which they install, but you have to build the structure to house it in, to their specification. It's about 130,000, including, um, an architectural fees, because, uh, you really wanted to design well, so it fits inside the building, and, I think. And, uh, and you, uh, and also, the VCDP is, is very demanding on, on designs and so on. Also, because it's this historical building, they may have some things to do. The fact that we're putting it inside will help. But in any case, I'm meeting with them tomorrow on a Microsoft team, Sue Allen and I, uh, with the two of them, the, uh, the environmental, which includes historical guy, and the guy that is the person who, um, handles the application. And, uh, to go over what we need to do, make, they want to make sure we understand everything we need to do, and that we're capable of doing it. And, uh, and just going through the, the process with us, so that, uh, we can understand it. So, the idea is, uh, is that we would maybe apply to them for putting an elevator in this building. The other possibility for the elevator is the use of the 190, a part of the 197 that we're supposed to get on the ARPA program. The problem with that is, no one, there is no guidelines for the ARPA program yet. They're supposed to come out May 10th, uh, which is, which is, uh, really next week, but they're hoping to come out by the end of this week, what we can use those funds for. And, um, it's just really general right now, what we can use them for. So, anyway, that's, that's what that's about. I, the only thing I'd like to know from you, you can make a motion or not make a motion, is that you want to, you want me to pursue getting an elevator in here. Uh, Kim is really in favor, because she can have the voting here. Um, those meetings that, that Hardy is gonna have, there wouldn't be any question, he could have them here if we had an elevator. Uh, you know, and, and our, our select board meetings? True, we wouldn't be able to have a, uh, town, town meeting here, I don't think, unless it becomes so unpopular, no one shows up for the town meeting. But, uh, uh, but, but we can have fairly large meetings that we don't expect the whole town to come out to. And we can have gatherings here, and the, the clubs can meet here, and all this stuff. And this is a great, a great, uh, project. And I was telling Sue, I'm, when we meet with them tomorrow, we're doing it on a Microsoft teams. I want to do it right here, much like you and I did, Joe. And they'll be, they'll be looking right at the, they'll be looking right at this, at that. And that's what I want them to see, that's what we want people to see. Yeah, so, so that, that's in a nutshell, is what I'm doing. And I just want to make sure it's okay with you that I, that you guys, that I pursue it.
Yeah, I think we should have a motion, so that, you know, just to pursue, um, the application process, if that's where it all is. So, hold.
Second.
Any further to say?
Um, so you're gonna send a link to Sue's going and buildings, maybe I don't want to go on that building.
Do you want to go, too? Do you want to be at the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what they say.
Oh, that, that's easy, it's, uh, 2 o'clock. Um, I think I sent it out, uh, on, um, an email, but I may not have, I can just send the, the link out, or I can send-
I'm out here tomorrow.
I can resend the invitation, Kathy, I can resend it and add you.
If you could both come here, it'd be easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to, what I do is set the tables right here, so we're up close, and, and they'll be right on the screen here.
Works a lot better.
But I did eat me out of you about, you said you had the application net, you had to include the building committee.
Yeah.
So, we were more.
Okay.
More than I could have.
Okay. I'll include, include that, Kathy, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Committee reports. Does any report from the Highway Committee? I don't have any on Highway Committee, okay? Parks? I, I think the only thing we have is that the sign is being made. They just, they, we cleaned up, we filled, we covered the, uh,
Sister?
The sister. Um, and other than that, that's really all, unless you have something else. Um, personnel?
Um, so when I met with Jill Muir, uh, last week, at Personnel Committee, um, she, we are sharing, um, our personnel policy with their, um, the LCT policy draft. Just comparing, we're finding that quite a few things from the LCT and their plan, uh, mirrors our plan. And we have questions about, um, certain items that were put into our personnel plan that we're, we should, this, we finish that up, and then me with Bill, um, answers some of our questions. It's going very well.
The Personnel Committee, I mean, I was on the board when we updated it, and we did use the LCT's uh, policy, uh, as, as a- model, yeah. That's, that's probably why it looks similar.
Yeah.
Any other personnel items? Buildings, I guess, we-
Nothing beyond that.
No, I think what, um, future, next couple weeks, we need to get together soon and look at how to clean up this area, yeah. Kind of in a holding zone for stuff. Just clear it out.
This is going on, three, three years, we've been trying to get this building cleaned up, with all the stuff. We've made a little bit of progress, man. The, the simple way to do it is just bag up the town truck, and just put it in, get rid of it. Most of the stuff on this truck. It would really be nice to have the place cleaned up, and they can look like a, 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 a- I'm glad you guys are working on that. Uh, wastewater, anybody for the wastewater, I'm not up here, but is there anything that anybody needs to say?
I think that, uh, Matt maybe on the, he told me-
Matt, are you here?
No, I didn't see him.
Okay. All right, um-
I can just tell you that they did do the testing the other day.
They did do the testing?
On that site, yeah. And they lost the, his, whatever machine he was using, they lost it in the mud, so, anyway. But I mean, they got, Danny went up and rescued him. Uh, and, um, do you, you approved them to go ahead and send out that RFQ at the last meeting, right? Is that correct? So, we're going, okay, I just want, make sure that that was understood. Okay, that's all I have.
Nice question. Bill, did they give you any indication of when the report would be out on the soils up there?
No, I didn't talk to anybody afterwards, I just know they're there, because Danny told me he had to go rescue them, so that's-
I can only add, Matt commented, he emailed me that they were done. And the girl that, you know, from one of the company engineers said they were really good quality test. Um, and very faithful.
Okay. Walker Bridge, the letter that goes out, is, is, is everybody happy with that letter, or are there some directions we'd like to make?
So, um, Mr. Chair, John and I had a conversation about the Walker Bridge, uh, response letter, and we have a motion to make, and some, uh, points about it, um, that could be discussed during the discussion period of motion, if that's acceptable?
Yeah, exactly, I was just gonna-
Okay, so, I wrote this motion down, so that I would get it right in the sense. Um, I move to accept the VTRN's response letter as presented in draft to the Select Board with edits recommended by the Highway Committee upon review and approval by the Select Board in this meeting or later. or later, if further consideration by the Select Board is needed.
One second. Okay. Do they have any discussion in the?
Yes. I have some material that I just want to hand out to the Select Board that follow along, so there's your Kathy and John and Kathy. Sue. And, um, I'll take this to Bill.
Thanks, Suzanne.
And there's the motion for a debate over here. Okay, so in the packet, I just want to make sure that members of the public know that all of this material will be available as part of the public record of this meeting. And, um, in the packet that the Select Board members have are, uh, the, uh, markup version of the original letter, the original letter, and a copy of the proposed response letter, including the edits that I'm about to recommend on the document. So that's what's in this packet that the Select Board members have included. Actually, I have a picture on that I can give to people who are here. All right, I'm going to give this to our city. Yes, sir. Sorry about that, Art.
That's all right. I know how to do it.
All right. So, um, first and John, I want to do is acknowledge Bill's writing of the response. You know, it's always easier to edit than to write from scratch. So, uh, Bill, thank you for that. Uh, we have three modifications that we would like to propose to the original letter. Uh, but before getting to those, I just want to say that nothing we are about to suggest or propose takes away from the key message in this response letter. And that key message, as you, uh, read, is that VTRN's failed to communicate adequately with the Select Board during the intervening months between the conceptual plan and the preliminary plan. So said differently, this letter is not letting VTRN off the hook. Our suggestions are intended to strengthen and add credibility to the plan by straightening out three points. Okay, now on your handout, I tried to make this a little bit simpler to follow by numbering in the markup the three points we want to make. So you see where the number one is on the second paragraph in the left-hand column? Okay, so point number one is Todd Sumner did not know in July 2020 that the cost of the bridge had gone up to five point oh five million. So it was impossible for him to inform us of that fact at that time. Rather, Todd and the VTRN's team knew about the cost increases as early as November 2020, and Gary LaRoche was aware of them in January 2021. And point number two is, is very related to that, so I'm going to go over that and then pause for discussion. The nine hundred thousand differential in the five point, uh, I think this is a typo, five point five one cost of the bridge was from the original scoping cost of four point one four eight million, not from the conceptual plan estimate of four point three six four. So, and anybody who's doing math in their head can figure that out. I'll give documentation of that if you need it. Okay, so what we are proposing then is that this section of the letter read, "At that meeting held virtually on April 14, we were further surprised to learn that from the time Todd Sumner, former structures project manager for this project, informed us in January 2020 of a completion of the conceptual plan, the realignment of the bridge nor delete in the right of way, and a current estimate of four point three seven oh cost estimate. Until March 2021, the town was not informed by Todd Sumner nor other VTRN's officials that the cost of building the road in the new alignment and higher preliminary uniting costs added approximately nine hundred thousand to the original scoping cost of the project."
And all these were agreed by Mrs. Culver, too?
Yes, thank you, John.
These were the facts.
Okay, is there any discussion you'd like to have on those two clarification points? All right, then I'll just move on to number three.
Where are the comments?
Number three is on the, uh, bottom of the page, on the right-hand side. Um, we're suggesting, do you see number three in the bottom right-hand side? Okay. Okay.
It's a little, it's a little small.
It's a little small. And it's dark. With respect to the questions asked about the reason for the cost difference, John and I are suggesting saving those detailed questions for a separate Select Board meeting with VTRN's and, and have Carolyn and Gary available specifically to answer those questions. We think it makes our letter stronger by not going into that level of detail with questions for VTRN at this point. Also, we are suggesting deleting the following language. However, since it was withheld information, there was no opportunity to have that discussion. As we've mentioned before, it's arguable that information was not withheld, it's unknown. And it is arguable that there was a time to have a discussion about the change from using a temporary bridge to moving the roadway and using one lane for traffic. That change was embodied in the conceptual plan that was sent to the town in July 2020. So I just want to pause there and see if you have any discussion about deleting that language?
Do you want to take out, add this to some?
So the, the new, the new, we, we agree. At the April 14 meeting, we also learned, um, let me back up. In addition, he felt informed, he didn't say he was not using a dead brick bridge. At that April 14 meeting, we also learned we found a fourth of the team there were delays in VTRN's contract out some of the project engineering work to primary forms. This increased the cost of at least eighty-five thousand and perhaps more. Then we delete everything else between that and the sentence and paragraph, and we conclude this section of the letter by saying, "This failure to communicate salient information to the town has to change as this project moves forward," and Carolyn Coda acknowledged that. That is a very compactable sentence. We, John and I believe it carries enough weight on its own to conclude that portion of the response, and then the letter goes on as it is in the draft. And again, if you'd like to read it as it is without reading that difficult markup, uh, you'll see in your handout, there's a edit without markup version, and that reads exactly as John and I are proposing all of which three.
Any other discussion? One second. No, no, we had that. You, you were having a question. Question is, don't do any further discussion, Paul. Okay, God, there's motion on the floor. So all in favor of accepting the amended language? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
And thank you, Suzanne.
All right, uh, the next thing is the driveway, uh, policy. I'm not quite sure what you want to hear.
All we want to do is if you want, would like to have a public hearing on it, I just need a date that you would like to do a public hearing on amending it to, uh, take out the language about building anything else other than those few things. I get, I just took out fences and stuff. And I think there were two changes. I have it here. And do you want to have a hearing on that? I'm not asking you to approve it or anything. The only two changes are, uh, on the second page, section four, no person shall build, erect, install, develop, construct anything other than a driveway access, driveway access, culvert, and mailbox within the town right of way. And that is, uh, uh, that's, well, actually, that's the only change to the policy, yeah. Okay, that's it.
I think that's the only change.
Yeah, that's it. And, and then the, the only other one, I have two marks on it, but the other one is the date. So yes, that's the only change.
Um, Joe, I'd like to make a motion that the highway access policy and the right-of-way policy be separate policies.
Second.
Because, I'll just say, the access policy, I thought we already had one of these. Now that has to do is with somebody moving a home in the driveway to it, or someone is logging, you give them permission. And the, the right-of-way is not putting things in the right-of-way. So I think it'd be a lot easier if you had just two different policies and you had a procedure for each one. And somebody that wanted to do either one of them would come in and get a form and take it home, fill it out, and then bring it back in. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No, I don't.
Do you, do you say anything, sir, about, I mean, having two separate policies?
No, but just, no, I don't have any problem with it. If you can get me a model, basically what it should say, not, there's nothing in the right-of-way. It's ours. I don't know what else you're going to say.
So it was our thought, Bill, that we could use the highway access policy as a model. It would have in it some of the same, similar components. It would not have as owner as a down payment, um, or application of dollar amount, but it would have an application fee.
Application, okay. And what are you going to put in the right-of-way?
What, what does he know?
If you have an application, the application is for something. What is that application for?
Well, it will state what can be put in the right-of-way and what can't be put in the right-of-way.
Okay, and just, I, I, I don't want to be argumentative, but what are you going to put in the right-of-way?
Well, there isn't anything except telephone poles, mailboxes.
Over there.
Well, so, I mean, we could have a policy. I wouldn't write a policy this long. I'd say, we have a right-of-way policy, and this is what's allowed in the right-of-way.
Well, I think.
The, oh, there is one other thing that we could do, and this is really important, now that I think a little bit more of it. We have a bunch of stuff in the right-of-way uh, that we have, well, they actually extended the access. Uh, we have underground wires and stuff that they're no longer using. We need something in a policy that says, when you are not using it, it's got to go. And we're charging, if it's VTEL, we're charging a big fee. I don't care, know what it be, a hundred thousand dollars that we put away in the bank to clean up after them if they don't, because they're not going to clean up. If they want underground the utilities, fine, but you got to clean them up. Because we have all those things all the way out. What it would cost to remove all of them? I was looking at them the other day.
And every time we dig, you have to get filled with the dig site. It costs money because you're not sure what the wire is really for.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, with these, uh, suggestions, if, uh, the Select Board decides to vote in favor of having a separate right-of-way policy, that John and I could just meet with Bill at a Highway Committee meeting and hash out what needs to be in that policy, bring back the recommendation to the next Select Board meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way it should be done.
That's, that's probably a good idea. I don't, yeah.
And leave the access policy the way it is.
Right.
So I, I don't need a motion, John. If you guys work, if you, if you come up with a policy, then we'll just bring it here and, and we'll adopt the, you know, adopt the, the policy. We'll, we'll, tomorrow.
I think I've been with it. I'm pushing for a public hearing, but I do know there's at least one resident that's very concerned about this. So I want to be sure that there is an opportunity for the public.
There has to be a public hearing.
I think you have to have a public hearing. I think you have to have.
Public hearing.
You have to have, whether you like it or not, you have to have a public hearing.
Good, thank you. I thought it was a motion.
Can I have a clarification?
You can't change this without having a, you know, public, uh, meeting.
Okay.
I said, you, you lead one, and, and the individuals have to have an opportunity to express their favor or, or unfavor of, 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 I don't know why. But if you do it this way, you're not changing the access policy anyways. And you have to say you said the policy is there.
Well, are you going to allow people to ask for a permit to put a fence in the right-of-way and under the access policy?
Bill, honestly, I think that's a topic of discussion for the Highway Committee meeting when you meet with us. And we'll hash that out, and then we'll bring back the proposal to the Select Board.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way to do it is, and, and if you have to change the access policy, we can do it at the same time. If not, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Kathy, do you know the trash bin above the floor?
Yeah. Uh, I've been in touch with, um, Peter Kaneider from Wyndham. And he has a group called Pete's Group, who the volunteers, twenty or thirty of them, they're all retired, um, military and police officers and firefighters. And they come up and they, um, do trail cleaning. So they did a big job last year in Rocky Ham for the cleanup. And so now they decided to grasp in, um, with the dump site on the hill of Oakville area, they'd like to clean that up. Um, so I have spoken to him about it, the date, um, it was going to be in May, but they changed it to June fifth. The five to six hours of volunteer work. They'll have a couple of dumpsters there, um, and some other equipment to get some of that trash. Uh, he did go up and look at the site going closely. Um, he did find some drug paraphernalia and needles. Um, I sent those pictures that I had. Beth and I went up on a Sunday and took some pictures. He also noted that from that site, dump, dump site towards Wyndham, um, where the turnaround is for our trucks, there's three other sites, dump sites. So I took pictures of those. Um, I did get in touch with, um, Don Google. GIA has a meeting coming up. I believe it's May 18th, um, to discuss if they would help out with either the dumpsters or maybe possibly the cleanup, um, costs. Um, so he's going to get back to me on that. I did call the owner with no response that had the land where the dump site is. Um, and said he's, you know, just let him be aware of what is happening. But I haven't been able to contact, um, it's Terry and Melanie Sheehan. Um, and they're in Perkinsville, they're on. Um, and I don't know who owns the other three sites. Um, Peter said that he did look at them. They're not as extensive sites as the one in Oakville. Um, he may consider having some of the guys pull that stuff out. Um, so that's where we're at at this point. I did speak. So that's where we're at at this point. I did speak with Rodney Stray about flaggers, a couple of flaggers. He was gonna talk to his, the firefighters, and we asked him to see if anybody's willing to do that. But I would like to see them pay. It's not fair for them to be out five or six hours doing it. So that's something I think the board should consider. Here again, this outfit is, you know, having their volunteer time. I did send Peter our volunteer form that we, so there's no liability on our part for the town. And that sort of thing at this point.
Do you know what the cost would be? The cost to grab it would be? It's absolutely possible?
Well, if there's a flagger, usually they get twenty-five thousand an hour. I don't know what the cost's gonna be for dumpsters and the weight of, usually that's the weight of the trash. And I was hoping maybe the owners of some of this property that were cleaning up would pick in some money, but I don't know. I don't know that cost. And I don't know if we have it in our budget. But it's been a long time trying to clean that mess up. And I'm concerned also of the, where this dump site is, it seems to be an area where people are going in and doing their drugs. And that's the spot. Not a safe situation.
Well, how does everybody feel? I mean, I think it should be done. I just don't know. I mean, I'm sure that it's probably in the budget somewhere. But it's something we should do, as it happens. So I guess we need to have some kind of a motion that
If dumpsters go on waste, that'll be eight hundred dollars, anyway, if not more.
Well, maybe fifteen hundred dollars for the whole thing?
Depends how much they wanna pick up.
Or how much they can retrieve.
Yeah.
It's pretty steep, Danny.
At the Grafton women's line, that would not be that figure.
No, there's a huge refrigerator, and I think the rest of the three areas, mostly, there might be a couple of mattresses, but there's tires.
Tires.
And I did get Bridgestone tires, guys. They have something that, who collect the tires will come and get them, but I haven't researched that company yet.
Kathy, are there any legal issues with going on someone's property if you're unable to reach them and get their approval? Will we not to go on private property without specific approval or random? But I like this, I support it completely. This is more a legal question than
Bill, is that a passive question here? I mean, even though they've signed the
If I own that property, I want the volunteers to sign something. If Mr. Sheehan wants it, that's why Kathy needs to contact him, and that's why we need to find out about this stuff. But, yes, now, is it likely anything to happen? No, but yeah, if it were our property, like the village park, we make them sign a volunteer statement and waive all liability.
And I sent that to you.
Yeah, and yeah, she gave them the volunteer thing, and I think that would be a good idea for the town, and they might just add the owner of the property to that thing without a name. If we don't know, you know, who owns it. It would be some protection for the owner.
So we have another meeting before we have to go to the city, right? So why don't, maybe Kathy can get some more numbers? And we can, you know, put the final, the A and A to the
May 17th.
17, yeah.
I'll look at that, Kathy, upside the turnaround of Danny with landlords.
Okay, great.
Kathy, thank you so much for doing all this research and getting this in front of us. It's a really important issue.
The real concern is, once you clean it up, I was gonna keep getting I know we've tried to get the signs up there, maybe we could put a camera up there so we can get a license plate or something of that nature, I don't know, but I think we need to be thinking about that as well. Because if you clean it up, now what are you gonna do to clean it up again next year or next month, or two years from now?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Kathy.
Bill, if we were to get this ticket process going that we talked about, would we be able to ticket people for this type of action?
Yes, yes, but, yes. The, and the police, it says right in the, in the law that, as I remember reading it, that they can, and they can just see what's in the trash, and if the person has their letters in there, they can ticket that person. The problem is they won't do that because they don't know that the guy who collects their trash didn't throw it away. And then I say, okay, then they can testify that it was him. They can blame him, and the cops can arrest that person and ticket that person. I mean, this is just stupid that they don't do it. And the law's written correctly. So, but we could, we could, we could try that, and we might get something out of them, but we'd have to find out, yeah, and you just have to somebody would have to carefully protect that evidence. If that were to, if that were to happen, you find mail and stuff, then they'd have to carefully protect that. Now, what did they throw away? The bag of garbage or all the tires? I don't know. But we should, you know, if you put a camera up there, you know, and, you know, you could, you can put a camera up there, you can pretend to put a camera up there, and that has some deterrent. If you actually put a camera out there, you might be surprised who's doing it.
Right, and then we could ticket those individuals by identifying them.
That's correct.
Well, the cameras are not that expensive, and maybe, you know, somebody would have to check them on a periodic basis and replace the battery. I did that on my trails when they were, had four-wheelers on there, and game, we guys had a picture of the guy, and game one, one pro talk to him, so they do work.
Yeah.
Well, it works. We're speeding tickets, it's easy cash.
Okay, so we'll put this on the agenda. Unless you have something else.
Bill, did you catch up the sheriff on the drug paraphernalia?
Yes, and, yeah, I did. And Lisa is the dispatcher, and she said, I'll take care of it. So, she went, she went up, she and Russell supposedly went up and picked them up themselves. And I don't know what they found, because I haven't talked to Lisa, but if you didn't find, you found some. If you didn't find a whole ton of them up there, and if you were in the same site, they picked them up, because they was, they were strewn all over the ground according to Peter.
Right, and I found two on the stump, and then the cat, and the cats.
Yeah, and I just, and if you still obliged to say, because I didn't know how they did this, you know, Lisa says the way you do it is you take a plastic Coke bottle, Pepsi bottle, if I have to give the get all the advertising, and you take a plastic, and you just pick it up with the, in the top, put it in the bottom. You don't touch anything, and it works really, really well.
Anything else on that?
Yeah, I found, I know, Bridgestone tires that have, it's called Tires Forward. And they have a program on tires. Maybe tires. But I can research that in
Matt, you're here. So, we, you know, nobody, nobody has any objection. We passed out the waste work today. So would you like to give us an update?
Sure.
Are you prepared for that?
No.
We're at the end of our meeting, so if you have something, this is we're done.
Yeah.
Shouldn't Matt come to the
Yes, please.
We need to come up here. I know you don't wanna be on camera, but we have, we have audience who's here who need to hear what they need to say.
Well, first, I met with Kim on the three sits. It became quite wet. But we did it. She marked out the GPS coordinates for the pits that we made. And Russell took the new road in with GPS marketing, so that's what we planned. And then we marked out a 400, about 200-foot area that would probably where we do the pit sits. And basically, we found two feet down, there was a little bit of water movement. With all that, everything became dry. And she was quite pleased with the town. It is what it is, and we'll submit it and see where it goes. We'd probably pick this road site.
So you have, you have no results now, not yet?
No, I'm not. It's a little safe.
How deep did you go now? How deep did you go?
Up to six feet, five, four to six feet. Get an old bedrock. There's, you know, bands of gravel, not much. But basically, the soils were very dry above that perch water table. So about two feet down in the perch water table, it's gonna move down through. And it's from that right part, that's where it's wet, grass is wet, so could follow that line back up to the elevation there, we'd find that about two feet down, that, that end of water, it's moving across everywhere. Basically, you know, to the engineers, we'll do the best we can. Sorry, it's the RFQ, we submitted that. That's the statement for qualifications now, it's gonna be coming back then from firms who sent up the seven firms. And they have until let's see, Wednesday, they'll give us some questions. So far, none. And then we have until the 21st for them to, back to about the 14th, that's to go to submit their statement of qualification. And then by the 21st, on, we should have a selection committee picked who's going to determine which firm will we are really good at. And then after that, we've got to make 24, bring interviews, if they want to do the firm that we decide to avoid. And then let's see. By Monday, five, and we've got to answer any further questions. And then by the last week of May, we should have it all together, who the firm is, and then the scope of work for that second firm. Sound good? Hold on. And then, on that, Claudia just submitted some information to the legislature. So that's gonna be that. Took some pictures and wanted to show us part to it.
Did she have any comments? Overall? Positive comments?
Who? For that?
Yeah.
Other than, she was excited to get the information. I sent her a few pictures of what we did on Thursday, and she's interested in those, so they know we're working on that property.
Good. All right?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt.
Do you have any comments? Any other business?
So, Mr. Sheriff, I just wondered if we could ask Bill to please make a request to the LCT to update the Grafton town municipal information. It has, the select board dated back to when Josh Hearn was a member. And it would be great if we made a formal request to the LCT to update that, please.
I think you did, did you do that?
I did it already. I sent you guys a copy.
Yeah, Bill already did that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see the copy, and it's still the same.
Yeah, and we have nothing to do with their website, and Kim said they get our information every year. They got it this March. Excuse me. They get our information every year. They got it this March, and if they don't do anything with it, don't know what to do. That's their website, so.
Okay. No other business? If not, the next meeting is May 17th, here at 6:00 PM. A motion to adjourn, please. The sheriff If not, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Good, thank you for coming, everybody. Thank you, Ronnie, for coming. Matt, did you see my email I sent you on the, on that lady?
Yeah.
Brett Wright on.
Yeah, I just listened to you back.
I did check my email today, so. But I think, I think you can walk, you know.
Okay. So it's gonna get you know, they're not so we're gonna have some, some things on the board.